He was on playing on a field on over there.
I was, uh, it was a rough day yesterday. I was like, where's Shane go? My battery died.
Yeah, I knew something. Yeah, yeah, I seen the, I figured when it just went, we just heard it. I was like, I've been this battery.
It did. It's, uh, you know, it's a good day when it, well, five o'clock, your battery dies.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a good day, but it's dead, dead.
It could be a good evening anyway.
Yeah.
So you're okay directing all of the movers over to the Charlie's district for a few days, right?
Yeah, I'd like to get one to go to bond on the way down. I just gotta complain on the way here.
Well, that's perfectly fine, but definitely, I haven't been.
It's on the way to Charlie's district, so it'll be a good time to get it.
So I instructed Sherry to tell them, but after what you said, maybe we ought to do it.
That's what I'm thinking. This kind of stuffy in here, don't you know? You know, it's warm in here.
My thermostat, my internal thermostat is so messed up, I don't, I don't even know. So my wife is like going to Sherry's, she has, she has like the temperature set on polar bear.
So you think it's, you like one minute, the next minute it's set on inferno.
And then I don't have the fire, I don't have a thyroid, so that's my internal thermostat, so I'm all messed up.
You only got a ten? We had over an inch.
Yeah, we didn't get hurt or anything on that.
Yeah, we paid it how the bond is.
Now, my way, we're not so bad, but.
Yeah, we didn't, I think Matt might have got three or four, but the further east we go, it's like from Brush Street School to town, probably got maybe three or four, but from about Brush Street School to the east, there's basically nothing. Liking like crazy, we could hear it all night long. I mean, seeing where we're at, like, in the three quarters or something.
Randall Marshall lives over by the refuge. He got inch and two tenths. My way, he's on nine hundred, Richard is south of Fitzpatrick.
Oh, like this, Patrick. Yeah, it'd been nice to call it an inch, right?
It's funny how I can get an inch and you get a ten.
Yeah, this is what wears me.
So, so animal control, we didn't use, they were talking about their building addition or whatever those.
Yeah, you, I'm sure you got, because I figured on that one.
I just read it out there.
Oh, it was in the survey? You stayed under that? I had time in, sorry, but for.
And I'm not going there.
It's like, we read what you said, take into consideration.
But nothing as far as adding one to the building.
Last time I felt like I was.
I agree with all.
Yeah, that's what it may.
So if we decided to do addition to the animal control rules, we stayed under that number minus that number? Because we would take this off of that?
Yeah, because this was on Sherry's and there was some things on maintenance, but nothing highway or maintenance.
Okay, all right, appreciate you. Thank you.
So I've got to miss that Alex down last night.
So we've got, we've got enough in the bond to cover that truck. So we'll just take it out of bond later.
All right. We, did he have it in the bond? Was it really in the bond?
Uh-uh.
That's why I wasn't sure what's, I don't know what's in it and what's not.
We'll see it, but I need, hey, did, did that get it? They got it too? So you, here's what's in the bond, and the amount, and then, did you put the, what's left down here, the bottom one there too? I think it's time, if everyone will please remove their hats and face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, Becca. I read what, I read what you were wanting. We'll just go ahead and stamp it. No, I. No, go ahead.
So I asked the council, I could, I had it as a line item, and they asked if I could use the Go Bond for it, but it wasn't in the twenty twenty four Go Bond.
So you didn't have it listed as a capital project?
Right, not until this year, for twenty twenty six, when I can do it.
But you need it now.
You're gonna need it in twenty twenty six. It's, like, it'd be a couple months shy, I mean, ten years old. So they can't get any more parts for it or anything.
And how much is it?
Seven thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and each by cents. But it should last ten years.
I gave you a year and a half.
Is that the number, what we're gonna have left?
You know, that minus the truck, and then now if you take this, that off.
And then take that off of there.
And then that doesn't, so then that number is what's left for, if you're gonna do that animal control.
So I've got Kenny's stuff taken out of it too?
Yeah. I think you're all right to do it. If you want to, go ahead and allow her to take it out of the bond.
The two things in the bond, do you still need those?
I don't know what, most of my things are in the bond.
Drop cedar, laptops.
I don't need them next year. I don't know any.
You have twenty five thousand dollars for a drop cedar. Is that something that you were planning on doing?
Not next year. I'll have to discuss with the board. I see that next week.
I guess we'll substitute it.
That's what I would add to, if you're not gonna spend that money. I'll make a motion to allow her to take the printer out of the bond.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Can I get back with you on the other two? I know we don't need laptops.
Regardless, there's, regardless, there's still a little wiggle room, so.
The laptops was.
As long as everyone doesn't start coming in here doing the exact same thing, which I'm worried that could happen, so. Yep, thank you.
Hey, Sarah, do you have an extra pen? My pen broke.
Here, I'll give you one sheet.
Never mind.
So next up is gonna be you.
Morning. I didn't have the full application and everything done prior to the meeting. I've got two grants that we're asking for just approval to apply for. One is the Subaru of Indiana. One is Jennings County Community Foundation. We're asking for one for an ultrasound grant to put ultrasounds on the ambulance. So technology is rapidly improving, and the parameters of what triostal providers can do is rapidly improving. And so we're asking for permission to apply for fifteen thousand dollar cash grant through Subaru of Indiana for four ultrasounds to go on our ambulances. That is thirty five hundred dollars for each ultrasound and nine hundred dollars for the software package to go with it.
Any matching funds required?
No, no, it's no match.
So, so really what you're doing is the right way to do it, to come and ask? But, but the main, our main concern always is match money, because then we gotta, we gotta figure out where it comes from, so.
Correct. Yeah, we're just asking for, we're just going through the procedure, so.
Yeah. So, go ahead.
Okay, second grant, Jennings County Community Foundation. Again, this is a cash, cash, no match, twenty seven thousand eighty three dollars for extrication equipment. Our extrication equipment is thirty years old. The life on that is fifteen years. So we're about to double the life. Technology and vehicles rapidly, rapidly goes, goes through generations. And so our tech, our equipment is not able to keep up with it, and so we're asking just for, again, permission to apply for a grant to replace our equipment.
And how much is the equipment that you're looking at?
Twenty seven thousand eighty three dollars.
So you actually have in the bond fifty thousand dollars allocated for extrication equipment?
You said in the bond we have allocated fifty thousand dollars for extrication equipment?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. So, so I would say go ahead and apply for the grant, obviously, and if you get it, then just be sure. Sarah, you guys catch that, that, that'll be money that can be moved over. There's obviously gonna be a balance left from that too, because you got fifty thousand, you said it only costs twenty seven, so.
Well, so.
Or is there more equipment?
So there's more equipment that can be bought. We're just applying for bare bones, because we're trying not to overinflate the amount that we're getting with the grant. I mean, we could, we could go up to forty seven thousand for, for more equipment, but this is just for bare bones. So obviously, if there's money there, then we will, like I said, Tracy can, can evaluate that.
Okay, so any further discussion? I have a motion to allow them to proceed with both grants. I'll make the motion, no approval.
I'll say.
You did?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Sherry.
First off, we have the unofficial detour for Bay Road. I had it when I was on vacation. So it's been our first meeting since. That's what I laid up there for you. They just corrected what we wanted to return data.
So this is the project that's already complete?
It is complete, yes. They just need a signature on it, is that?
Nothing. We made them change. It was up by Brad Schills.
Okay, any further discussion or a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve them if you're given.
Say.
Unanimous.
And then second, I want to ask to be able to purchase our mechanic service truck out of the bond.
So we've reviewed the, the bond, and there was ample money to pay for the truck in the bond, so.
I'll make a motion to take it out of the bond.
Say.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
The amount on that, Tracy, if you need to know, is county price is fifty eight thousand three hundred dollars. Trina, you here for Michelle?
Yeah, she, she got held out. She said she would be coming.
Okay, you're up.
Actually, you passed Nikki.
Unless you wanna skip, do what?
You passed Nikki.
Oh, duh, I already marked Nikki out. Never mind, never mind.
So Trina Wizard, member of Animal Control Board, going on my second term. So I wasn't around during the initial bond paperwork. That was Michelle's date of eleven thirty twenty twenty three. We have a lot of items now that I'm on the board. We've been talking about. We're trying to distinguish between budget items and capital project items. So one of those is building improvements. We've asked for a building. Dave Woodall was on last year. We don't know where we're at on that. We hear there's money in the bond for it, but we just don't know.
It's not listed.
Right.
It's not listed, but there, that's what we were talking about. Prior to starting the meeting, there is a little bit of a unexpended funds at the bottom of it.
We just had some items that we wouldn't need if that was the case, you know, with, I printed off what she submitted. I mean, she had ten thousand dollars for a parking lot. Paid fifteen thousand dollars for a roof, outside dog kennels. We've already done some of that work. You know, she has a riding lawnmower in there for thirteen thousand dollars, and that's what started bringing up the question, is are we mowing our own yard out there? Are we asking the two, three full-time employees we have to also do the yard work? And if that's not the case, who, who do we need to do that through? Is that something we need to add into our budget? And then budget that throughout the year? Is that four hundred dollar a month expense that we don't have? You know, we talked to the city, they're gonna take care of snow removal over there.
Which would you rather do? Would you rather have a lawnmower and mow your own grass? Would you, because here's the deal.
I'd rather budget it and not put it on employees. I mean, they just don't, they just don't have time to mow the grass. And, and you know, it's a big area, and we've been asking for volunteer help to do it. We've had volunteers come in in Bush Hall. We've had volunteers come in to do a lot. I think we need to utilize the volunteers at helping with the, with the mission at work at hand, with the animal control and then the shelter side, but not rely on volunteers to mow the yard, or rely on our three full-time employees to try to mow.
I'm gonna be honest, we struggle where else with the lawn mower, and so I'm, I'm not gonna volunteer anybody to mow the lawn.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason I asked you.
Well, that's why I said we submitted for quotes, but we just don't have, I mean, we submitted for quotes, and I want to say it might be a hundred dollars in mowing. And even if we did that every other mowing, we just, there's no line item in there, in our budget for mowing. So, you know, when I was on the board, I started asking that question, is what's, what's expected out of us as a board, or as a department? If we need to take care of our own yard, then we need to budget it. Is it something that county takes care of? Is it something that we, we try to team up with the cities, and they're right next door? You know, ultimately, we, we heard about using some of the work release people, and I just don't wanna count on that before something needs to be done every week. I mean, we need the building looking as good as it can look, being a county building, so the only way I'm gonna do that is to pay somebody to mow the yard. But then that would be through the budget discussion. We just wanted to come to use, we went to council last meeting and talked a little bit about it, and, you know, that's what started bringing up some of these bond questions that we're just unsure of with the radios. We need to purchase some, some vehicle radios and some hand kennels, but they're all under twenty twenty five. They're under the bond paperwork that was submitted. We're just trying to clean some of that up.
So how did the grass get mowed prior? Because this is just now became an issue.
Well, I think Michelle's husbands came out and mowed it a bunch. You know, before, before my time on, I don't know. I, I just know that they've been trying to mow it. You know, you're always seeing Facebook posts about, hey, would anybody come mow? We had Dustin Sanders come out and he put a sign in the yard because he took care of the mowing. And it's just, as, as a county department, I just don't wanna have to rely on volunteers to mow. You know, and if it's something, whenever, we were down, we only had two full-time employees for the longest time. We were down ACO two. So then we asked, is our, is our animal control officers, are their responsibility also include mowing the yard? And is that, is that the same in other departments, you know, with, with limited resources? And as far as from a budgetary standpoint, if we add that in the budget, then I'm okay with it. And I didn't bring the budget paperwork, but I think we have five thousand dollars a year for building and maintenance. That's not even covering the mowing, you know, and then to get the mower, and then the fuel of the mower.
Well, you, you have, in the bond, you have ten thousand dollars for a shed and thirteen thousand dollars for a lawnmower. So I'm assuming when they put the paperwork in for the bond, they were assuming they were gonna buy a shed and, and a lawnmower, and they were, they were planning on mowing, so.
And, and I don't wanna speak for Michelle, she's not here, but this was submitted before I was on the board. And I'm not sure what her expectations, what she thought everybody expected of her for that, and I'm pretty much the one to say, you guys are already struggling keeping up. I don't know how you're able to mow this yard, and she said, well, my husband usually comes in and helps. But we have these people coming, and I'm just thinking, we're trying to move this department, you know, forward a little bit, and I know it's a small portion of the county, but it's a thirty two thousand dollar a year operating budget department, so that's twenty eight hundred dollars a month is all we have to operate that department. So then to ask them to, to do all that, and then to take care of two acres of mowing, which I know a lot of it's pasture, and we've been asking for volunteers to do the pasture, but I just had the survey pulled on that, and it's like a little over two acres. We're not asking to mow all that, but I think we need to have a plan to keep that mowed and in place. And if you're saying that's ours to do, then I think we're gonna have to ask for some part-time help to do it, and then the thirteen thousand dollar mower, and then the ten thousand dollar shed. So now we have twenty three thousand dollars that we can reallocate to ask somebody to mow and not need.
So how many employees do you got now?
We don't have three, four times. One part-time, we have two animal control officers that we just filled the second position and.
And one per, one person doesn't have a couple hours to give a week to mow that grass?
I'm not gonna say don't have, I mean, it's a, you know, we're split times between animal control officer one and two. They're supposed to be kind of, and animal control officer two is supposed to be like a two to, two to five, or, or ten to five. I can't remember what the hours were. But their job mainly is to go out and to deal with their calls and to do that. I think that, that's the expectation of the animal control, is that the expectation of the park. I mean, does the sheriff mow their yard? Does anybody in here mow this yard, or Vanessa? You know, and that's what we're trying to figure out, but it is, we need to add it into the budget. We need to go figure it out. I would not expect, you know, our, our police officers to mow their front yard.
So, so where we're at this, I just checked, because I, I thought I was right on this, but I wanted to check before I opened my mouth. So with the thirteen thousand for, in the bond for the riding mower and the ten thousand for the shed, I know what you're asking. Instead of do that, can we use that twenty three thousand dollars to just contract something? And you can't do that.
Right, right, I understand that.
The money has to be.
Yeah, that's what we spent for this purpose for.
Yeah, so, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I mean, it would be, we can't do that. So, I get.
The question is, do we go to the commissioners for it, to up our budget for contract mowing? Or do you, is it your guys' recommendation that we have the employees mow the yard?
It's my recommendation, we have the employees mow the yard. Or, or volunteer, or someone on the board, or, hey, sometimes you can call me and I'll go mow it. I don't care.
All right, so we're, we're asking for volunteers, if any of the commissioners would like to.
I'll do my share.
And then, where, where do we stand with the building? Because it was, when you say it wasn't in the bond, Dave was on the, he was on the board twenty four, and he acted like it got put in. But again, that, that was my first year on, so I didn't even know about the bond process and what was, what was going through.
I agree with you. I think it was supposed to be in there, but it's not on the list. And I think the reason it's not on the list is because when you look at the balance at the bottom of what isn't spoken for, it pretty much was close to the number that we talked about on the addition. So I don't know how that happened, but it happened.
I think, I think the biggest problem is, I don't know if we ever had a rock solid number, what it was actually gonna cost.
But it wasn't that close to the number that Dave.
It was the rough estimate. We've never seen that.
Yeah, I think that number was actually just a budgetary number, because the, one of the numbers we got for a just pre-engineered metal building nearby talk, that was one point two million, just concrete and steel. You know, that was nothing that was on there. So I think the other number was just trying to get a shell of the building to grow into. You know, Ryan Curry sent me the, the building sur, or the lot survey last night, so we had that two acres there, but we were just a little lost on what is approved on the bond. Like the radios we talked about, Michelle's been asking for radios now all year, and we're trying to hold off to see if they're better than the.
So let, so let me just tell you what's on it. You've got computers, five thousand bucks. Vehicle radios, fifteen thousand bucks. Handheld radios, six thousand. Outside dog kennels, you have fifty thousand. But you said, so that's already been done, right?
We did the inside and just fixed a little bit of the outside last year, and they were, they were being torn through.
Roof, fifteen thousand?
That's only twenty thousand, man. That outside dog kennels is only twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, that's what they spent on.
It was hard to read.
Okay, that looks like a five to me.
It does, but it's a two.
Well, when we asked for that, for the outside dog kennels, is when we got the new addition and had the guillotine doors for the dogs to go outside. We were gonna put more kennels out back on that, that concrete slab that we have back there, connecting to the guillotine.
Parking lot pave, ten thousand bucks. AC unit, six thousand. Riding lawnmower, thirteen, shed, ten. Floors, wall and trim, eight thousand. Security system, six. That's what was on the bond.
And then that AC truck with the dog boxes that was in twenty twenty seven, that was same line as the, same year as the floor walls and turn, did that not make it?
But here's the deal, so as long as we're, so if there's things on here that you, because it's a new board, that you don't agree with, and there's something that you want to trade, you just can't trade it for services.
Right.
I mean, so you could trade a parking lot for a truck, or, you know, whatever, back and forth, if there's something you wanna do alternate, but you can't trade it for services. If that makes sense. Did I say that right?
If you'd wanna hire somebody, you could go to the council and try to get it in your budget, if you'd like, you know, instead of.
And we just wanted to know the expectation, you know, I mean, is, is county highway doing the mowing, or they mowing it, do we need to contract it? We already got quotes, as, you know, I said, volunteers, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be super tough to ask the employees to continue to do it, or to property, and then do their stuff, so.
If you decide you wanna do that, I do know some people that mow a little cheaper than others. If you want more quotes, I can send them your way.
But I would almost say, it's kinda like the volunteer fire departments. Like, when you think no one's gonna step up and do something, usually in this community, someone steps up and does it. And I know you don't wanna do it, the hassle of trying to find somebody, but typically, if you said, man, we just don't have the money for this, is there any way? I mean, I know a lot of people with mowing businesses that I'll bet you five hundred bucks.
Probably donate it.
The next day, they'll be out there mowing it, probably donating it, but that.
And they have been, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, asked how it's been being mowed, and I said, a lot of times, her husband would come out and do it, and, and I just, I just think, honestly, I think it looks bad as a department that we have to ask for that. I don't wanna have to ask for volunteers. When we ask for volunteers, we wanna ask for something like, hey, come out and do the pasture, but not, hey, can you, can you do what is required by area plan to keep our yard?
But in order to get where you're at, I want you to keep in mind where this was.
Oh, great.
Years and years ago, I remember when animal control was one guy that drove around the county with a twenty-two rifle. And that's all I'm gonna say about that, but I remember when that happened.
No, and I, I appreciate your guys' support.
And now we aren't to where we are, so I mean, there's gonna, there's gonna be some trade-offs, but.
We just, we knew that, that with the budgets getting cut this year, we were way behind times on getting our budget raised. I mean, we're, we're way down there, so we're just trying to make do with what we have. Like I said, trying to deal with capital improvement projects versus budget line items, and that's, that's what this was about, so.
So do you have this paper, the, in the bond? So can we, I don't know if it's a good idea to put the amounts on here. Let me think about that. We'll, we'll try to get you a copy.
It's what they submitted. It's what they submitted on their capital. That's where I got the amounts.
And that's why I was asking about that truck, because that's the only thing that you guys had, you listed every single line.
Yeah, that's where I got the amounts. I pulled up their capital forms, so I could see what the amounts were.
So in other words, somebody on the committee decided you didn't need to throw up.
Okay, so that's, that, that was just the only thing that was not on that.
Maybe if it was pushed out for three years, they just, I don't know.
Because when the budget was done, it was, it was pushed to twenty thirty, twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, this was twenty twenty seven, I know.
Okay, so you kinda know what you got to work with there?
Yeah, the only thing we're still air on a little bit is what would be left on the building, and yes, that was it.
I know, so if something was on the bond, but we paid for it through our non-reverting, do, can we replenish the non-reverting, or do we just move it to do something else?
We can find a piece of equipment.
You can find something else to spend.
You can trade, you can trade it like Matt said.
I knew he was gonna say that, but I looked at him just to be out of curvy.
Yeah, I didn't even know he looked at me.
Oh, I did.
He caught your eyes.
You didn't see me glaring at you?
Yeah, if you give us that paper, it, whenever it comes, even without the amounts, at least it lets us know, so.
Okay.
All right, we appreciate that.
Thank you, I'll see you. Okay, now I'll circle back around to Nikki, who I, so Rudy skipped. No, it wasn't. I totally had a mark to your, I was just like going up here marking willy-nilly, I thought you were kidding.
In your package, you should have a couple of travel requests, like this is from the court's office to attend an election administrator conference. The cost will be paid from the general fund. If they called in, yes, yeah.
Stay called. Stay called. I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Say. Unanimous.
Your next one is from the assessor to attend the twenty twenty-five AIC annual conference. And I have, I have the documentation, I just didn't make a notice and go with it. But I do have his registration confirmation and postal information.
To get extra money for gambling?
And that'll come out of his budget.
I'll make a motion to approve, say.
Unanimous.
I also have an request from the assessor to hire a part-time employee to cover the lunch hour so that he can avoid. He has the money in his budget to do so.
Were you guys paying attention? Figure what she just asked for?
Mm-mm. I was listening to Alex.
All right.
The assessor says he has it in his budget to hire a part-time person to answer the phones.
I don't know what the council's saying. It's really gonna be up to them.
He's gonna put attention on council funding that.
It's, he's got a part-time line.
He has, he has funding right now to, to cut within, yeah.
So it's already funded, there's a line item in the budget for it?
Yes.
Okay, well then you just need to approve him advertising his position.
Okay, so he's got the money already in there.
Making a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve it.
I'll say it. Unanimous.
Lastly, to go back to your bond paperwork, I had took in for a laptop. There has been some confusion as to whether it was on the bond or not. I got a call from the auditor's office that it was included. And my laptop is about to bite the dust, I'm just trying to figure out how old. And I think it came in, the quote I have, actually it's already been ordered, but the invoice I have, it came in under what I requested.
It's clearly on the bond, so.
You got two things on there.
The laptop came in at eleven forty-nine twenty-five. I think that's less than what I requested.
That's total, like?
Total.
Okay.
Yep.
What'd you say, eleven what?
Eleven forty-nine twenty-five. And I would just like to ask permission to go ahead and pay for that out of the bond.
I'll make a motion to allow her to go ahead and purchase it?
I'll say it. Unanimous. I saw those two, that's okay. Is that all you had?
That's it.
Next up, Sarah.
I have also the AIC conference that I would like to attend. This is going to be at French Lick. It would come out of my auditor's budget and it's from September twenty-ninth through October second. And you have that in your packet.
Well, it wasn't in that packet, hold on. Here it is. It was the last place I looked. So, any further discussion or motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Say it. Unanimous. Is that all you had?
Yep.
Next up, Mark Frost.
That's me. This is concerning the guaranteed energy savings project that was done in like twenty nineteen, I think it was. I just sent a report to you showing, you guys have this confirmed?
Yep.
Okay. Showing how much savings has been to date. The project was originally about a million four hundred thousand dollars and to date, savings has been about five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So, probably a third of the way through the, the savings. The project, just as a refresher, was LED lights pretty well everywhere, a roof on this building, the standing seam roof, new controls for this building and, and the solar arrays that themselves, so. We, we service the solar arrays and we continue to watch them and monitor them. If some fault comes up, it lets us know right away and we, you know, it's important enough, we roll truck and get it taken care of. We also have meetings every month where we sit and look at every one of our solar arrays to make sure that they're performing like they should. And yours is on that list, so just letting you know that we're watching it and making sure it's going what it should be like. So, along with that is a report that needs to go to the Department of Local Government Finance. It's just kind of a report back to them. I do, I do these reports because they're a little simpler to read than, than the state's form that they have for us. But, I guess the only ask on my part is that I need some signature on, on those state reports, so I can submit it to the state. Also, just as a info, I have this, this is from the Indiana, Indianapolis Star, just recently, I just cut it out of there. And it is, it just shows that electric rates are continuing to go up. If you listen to the news, you can hear the governor talk about electric rates are, is too high and everything. And, you know, the project that you did with the solar arrays helps avoid those rates, at least partially. And it was a good news report, so.
One thing I see under the report that bothers me is at the bottom of page four, it says recycle and fairgrounds not monitored. Entered in approximations based on the computer.
Yep, and those were always that way, they weren't monitored. There was no, there were a bunch of smaller arrays and so, the, you know, that, from the very beginning, they've never been monitored. And so what we put in is what the model said it would be. And all the other arrays have met what the model says. So, the great portion of, of your arrays are measured, so monitored.
Okay, so it looks like everything's good and we're on track where we're supposed to be, right?
Yeah.
So are you, you're basically the replacement for Kurt Snyder used to come here, so you're.
Well, I, you know, originally we were called Johnson Mellis, we're called Bergey now. Kurt's still with the company, he had another meeting, he couldn't come to this morning. I did not work on your project originally, but I was, I was with the company then too. After Kurt, I was number two employee at the company, so I've been on the ground for a while. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Indiana. And the first new originally, the engineers originally worked on this, no longer works for our company, so I took over. It was the measurement and verification part of this.
Okay.
Tracking.
All righty, we appreciate the info, thank you. Next up, Stacy Lane.
Purdue Extension Jennings County and Jennings County four H is asking for the community building rental waiver for the date of November thirteenth for our extension annual meeting and a Jennings County four H under it. With my understanding, after we asked the auditor's office for that date, someone has called in and asked to pay for rentals for the following day. But I believe, my understanding is, we are gonna ensure that the building is clean for that next rent charge coming.
They canceled?
Yes.
Okay, they canceled?
They canceled, okay.
Everything's good.
The next day they canceled, yeah, they called yesterday.
So that, is that a Friday or a Saturday or?
It's a Thursday evening.
Thursday evening?
We have a request for, for that date.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Say it. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Alex, do we need to vote on that county road, we was gonna take over that one seventy before you get the paperwork, do we need to wait?
One seventy, I'll buy that.
One seventy?
Yeah, yeah.
Just go ahead and vote on it. They did all the improvements on that county road, is it one seventy west or east? I can't remember what that road is.
Private road, is it one seventy east?
East.
Morgan State, if that helps anybody.
They replaced the culvert, we asked them to, everything's been done and Brian's approved it.
So I got one question for you. So now when we vote to take that road over, because it was listed as private road one seventy and now it's gonna be county road, whatever, does it change everyone's addresses?
I assume.
I would assume.
Oh, boy. Do they understand that?
I don't wanna ask them to do that, so.
I am not in charge of the United States Postal Service. I can do a lot of things, but that is not one of them.
It's one of those things, you say, not my problem.
But we're sure that every person in that housing addition wanted this done, correct?
They have to sign with Alex before it's legal.
So the way that it'll work and it's the same with Cross Road Creek, Cross Road Creek Drive, all of the owners in that subdivision will need to execute a quit plane deed of the lot, which is the road to the county. So this will only be effective if all of the lot owners.
If one person bails, then it's done.
Okay, so, you know what, you know, while I'm asking.
And we told them all that upfront.
So the reason I'm asking is because we vote to take the road over and then someone finds out that they're gonna go through all the rigmarole or their address being changed and then they come back and they say, well, I wasn't on board with doing that.
Well, that's.
Sorry, that they're not.
Then they don't sign.
And then they don't sign the transfer. Otherwise, at this moment, each, out of Morgan State, there are five lots. And each of those lot owners own a one-fifth interest in lot six, which is the road, so.
But if one of the five doesn't sign, then it's a done deal, there's, it's not happening. They all have to agree, that's the way Alex is gonna write it up.
Just so they know that going in, sir.
I'll make a motion to take over County Road one seventy east.
I'll say it. Unanimous.
Private road.
Our private road.
Still unanimous. Okay. What was that? Oh, do we wanna take action on what was presented at the last meeting rather to allow us paying for the portion of the magistrate position? Because we said we were gonna table it until this meeting, I thought.
No, I think we, I think we actually did say the next meeting.
That's up to board, I know all the judges are at a conference this week, so.
Well, I never received any of the, the questions that I asked, I never received any feedback from anyone on any of the questions as far as of new information.
I haven't received anything.
Did you, Charlie?
No, I haven't seen any more information.
Nothing was turned into the auditor's office for us regarding that, correct? Based off the public sentiment that I had, I mean, I don't know what you guys were, but I haven't had one person other than the three judges that thought it was a good idea for us to do it, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request.
I'll say it. Unanimous. So, then that brings us to another point. We, we keep going back to the bond. Go ahead.
I know that you said, you kind of briefly said what Shane was motioning, but can you, Shane, will you elaborate what you were denying?
I believe the magistrate to deny the request from the judges to fund a magistrate on the county level.
They tried, they called it a referee.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Some call it a magistrate, some call it a referee, I don't know what they call it.
Right, okay.
It's just hard to sell that to a taxpayer. If on the state level they determined the crime, the crime rate was not such to support the position, then it's very hard to sell it to the public, to put it.
Let's rephrase that, not crime rate, the number of cases.
Cases, correct.
I mean, they said we needed it when we brought it aboard.
Correct.
And now they took it away, so. I mean, I, it's not, to me, it's not our responsibility to figure out if we need it or not for that kind of money.
So then what happens to all these things that are in the bond for the magistrate court?
Well, it was magistrate, it was turned in as magistrate slash circuit on the capital request form.
In our paper, it shows all magistrate.
The magistrate courtroom is connected to the circuit court office, so it would make more sense for that to be reallocated to circuit, yeah.
So just change every one of those to circuit?
Correct.
I actually thought about that when I was putting those numbers in, but they, the capital request actually showed magistrate circuit at the top.
Okay. Mitigation plan adoption.
Barry Shepherd, you're up.
Add that one within your blue.
Okay.
Every five years, the counties have to update or have an application claim. It's about a year-long process and we go through it, we hire a company that helps us do it. We're to the point now that the plan has been written, correctioners have had the public meetings and went through the process, so at this point, the plan goes to Homeland Security for review. They have thirty days. After they're done, it goes to FEMA for review and approval, and they have four or five days. Anytime during this period, I can have the adoption signed by, by you guys. If something changed after this sign, it's still included in there, you can see that. So we just sign that and I have people for your towns like Vernon and North Vernon, they'll go to their councils and set them in the same process. This is the second one I've worked on, so it's pretty much complete now. It's about a hundred and fifty pages.
I was gonna tell you, I wanted to see it and read it, but it's a hundred and fifty pages, I don't know.
You can have it, I'll bring it to you.
My attention span is about.
You can actually, you can actually go.
Squirrel.
You can go on the website, it's on there, if you go to county website, there's a link and you can see it, read it.
I'm gonna trust you in this one.
Read it in this section, if you can, you also.
Any further discussion or motion to approve?
Make a motion to sign?
I'll say it. Unanimous.
How many of these do you need signed? Just one?
Also, one, pass through.
Barry, after the meeting, I'll put a resolution number on there and scan it in, email it to.
While he's up there, you wanna discuss burn ban?
You know, I think it's gonna happen sooner than later.
We've been watching the, for everybody to know from Boston weather and how dry it is, especially what you guys do, so. As of today, there are twenty counties in the state that do have burn bans, I think about half our district does. Looking ahead to forecast if it's gonna look like it's gonna.
Is this week, is this weekend rain showing any measurement at all or do they think it's gonna?
I don't know, it's like the last one we had, I mean, hardly any rain, it's, the ground's soaked up, so. In, in Hayden, you know, the corn's really dry.
Right.
You walk through it, it's dry.
It wouldn't take much to burn a lot down right now.
Something broke out and I'm just thinking.
I'd say the air on the side of caution, you just go ahead and do it.
Did you say you had the paper, paperwork with you?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, you got it, you got it.
I had it, I had it written up last time, just brought it just in case we did decide to do that, so.
I think we might as well go ahead and put it in the paper, cause if the rain coming's not gonna amount to much, I mean, I don't see where we get much choice.
We had four tents at my house, I left last one, and by nine o'clock in the morning, you couldn't tell we had gotten anything. The grass was already crunchy again by nine o'clock the next morning, so.
And then it was seven days to decide, and you guys can end it whenever, you know, you can shut it down. But seven days we'll review again and see what we have, we can continue it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and sign the burn ban.
I'll say it.
Unanimous?
Same thing.
Seems like they've been tracking us, man.
I could use that burn ban about two weeks ago.
I heard that.
Yeah. Thought I was gonna catch the woods on fire.
Were you the one that lit it?
I was the one that lit it.
We had one yesterday.
Well, I'd say it's time, then. So does anybody in the crowd have anything?
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
I'm Ryan Wheeler with the Boys and Girls Club. We had, some of my staff had reached out about the use of the community, the community building for a fundraiser in January. I didn't know if we were able to get on the agenda for that.
She was, Laura, I think, was supposed to come back for sure.
Okay. Am I able to ask?
Yeah, you're fine. You're fine. Go ahead.
So we are looking to use the community, or the community building on January twenty-fourth for a fundraiser for Boys and Girls Club, specifically Jennings County. And we're looking to add that fee away so we can raise money, hopefully, raise a lot of money.
I don't have the calendar, but I would think that it would be okay. I don't have anybody, because I don't have a calendar.
I'm gonna ask Alex a question, a sidebar before you vote on this, because we were told in that joint meeting the other day, or at least five times that we had to run the community building like a business because the expenditures aren't really matching the income. Well, on an organization like this, or Toys for Tots, or ARC, or whatever, it's always been my opinion that there are some things you can't collect for because they're providing a service for our residents and they're not for profit. So should we kick these ones that are asking to use the community building for free because it involves money over to the county council? Because they're the ones that said that we're gonna have to start operating this like a business and be.
That's your decision, this board's decision. I think the council will not be very happy with if you do that.
Then I vote we do it. It's always been my opinion that, you know, that community building is just like the courthouse, just like this building. It's paid for by property tax doll, you know, tax dollars. So it kinda belongs to the citizens anyways. And I, I get it, you know, there's, there's payments, there's electric bill, water bill, all those things. I get it. But there's just, there's just some things that you have to be able to furnish for the citizens. It's, it's just something that. So for me, an organization like you, or Toys for Tots, or ARC, or whatever, I, I've always thought it should be waived, but.
I think it's the cleaning fee, honestly. I mean, because we have to clean.
Yeah, I was under the impression that they asked would be to waive the usage fee and we would still have the cleaning fee. That was what I was, in talking to the committee that's helping move things forward, they, the suggestion was that it was for the usage fee and then we still paid it, we would still pay the cleaning fee.
That's good.
That was.
What do we say the cleaning fee is?
We have said that it's seventy-five. We need to move that up because it's like.
Seventy-five right now?
We need to move that to one fifty because it's just, there's too many things that have to be done and be clarified for that.
And the committee we had too, we're gonna do everything we can to keep it the way we got it. I'm sure to do stuff, like do toilets and windows, I get all that stuff. That's, we, yeah, we see about two hundred kids a day in Jennings County. We know people coming through with sticky fingers, the hands and that, adults aren't much better sometimes, so. We get it. But we're just, we are, we're in our fifth year here in Jennings County and we're continuing to grow. State cuts have hit us. And so this is a brand new event. We're hoping to really turn it into hopefully a tradition here in Jennings County. We did a couple breakfasts a few years back before kind of economy changed, but we're hoping to do a Jennings County's Got Talent, which is a playoff of the Dancing with the Stars that we've done Seymour in the past eleven, twelve years, where the past twelve years raised about a billion dollars in Seymour, and so. But we figured that out here in Jennings County.
Here's your change, Charlie.
So I'll maybe contact you guys and show them your line dancing skills.
Or maybe you could be a judge.
I can answer that now.
You say the twenty-fourth is okay, though. You're.
I don't have that scheduled. I don't have the twenty-fifth, but I, I can get with you to make sure that that's okay.
I think they, they checked when it was open. I mean, it's, there was, there was the week before and that made.
Yeah, I just don't have that calendar.
What are your hours? The hours? I don't think.
We were looking at doing the Friday before for rehearsal and then the Saturday.
Okay.
So for future reference, I'm gonna give you Shane's speech now. We're more likely to waive the fee if you don't do weekends, especially if you're doing a Friday and a Saturday. 'Cause that, that annihilates us because then if there was a paying customer that wanted it.
That's typically when we get them, is the Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
And if you had one that came back and said, "Then keep the spot," or.
We're not big on bump, we're, I'm never, I've never been big on bumping people because that, that's choosing that someone's event's more important than someone else's, and I'm just.
Well, but I think it gets to the point if you say, "Hey, we, you're taking money out of pocket and you need to build it in the budget. We can put a contingency in our budget for the, the event." And completely get it. I mean, I, I, we, when we do anything, now that we are Seymour, Brownstown, Jennings County, we work really hard to make sure that there's Jennings County money spent in Jennings County, Seymour money spent in Seymour. Shirts and stuff that are done, if, if we have it and we're doing it for a staff, we can try to get it done locally. And so we get it. I mean, that, that's, nothing's free. I mean, if, if it's, we're asking for free, somebody else is paying for it. And so I've come to you in the past asking for a lot of dollars for Boys and Girls Club to help for it, so hopefully that's just a, a smaller, smaller ask.
So any further discussion or a motion to approve or deny it?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on Sarah's checks that date.
I'll say it.
Unanimous?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. So are we gonna come up? That we're gonna start implementing after the first?
I think we're gonna have to.
So Sarah, is that something you'd wanna work on?
I'll be happy to work on it.
I guess we need to revisit the cleaning fee. We need to revisit the whole thing.
Yeah. I'm not big on a rate increase because there's just too many places. I mean, it's, it's North Vernon. There's already too many places that have venues that someone can rent. I mean, you got St. Mary's, you got the Shrine Club, you've got.
Probably need to do a survey on what everybody else's.
Willow Lake, you've got Josh Yeager's venue, now you got the community building. I'm just afraid if you increase the rate, you're gonna have even less customers, so.
I think the rate increase would be okay, but I think what we talked about last year, just the upgrades of like the back room, the little corner room, and upgrading some things would need to be done to increase the rate.
We have brides that come in and we use the back room for their hair and makeup. They, they use the back room for hair and makeup. But to be able to, again, have that increase, you have to have those amenities, even though they're the, the actual increase could be there in, in the community. Again, we have to look at who's utilizing it, how often is it being utilized? Because no matter what you charge, if it's not being utilized, it doesn't matter. So with those upgrades that has been proposed, that would be, that would be helpful.
And what is the current fee right now?
It's six hundred dollars with a, for all day, and it is with a two hundred dollar refundable damage deposit. And then it's fifty dollars per hour. We have people that wanna come in and do birthday parties, anniversary parties, that they don't want the whole time, so. That's fifty per hour.
And if you're a county employee, it's half?
It's half, mhm, yep.
Okay, well, that's, that's, anybody else in the crowd have anything? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve prior minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Unanimous? And then I will entertain a motion to approve payroll decline.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Unanimous?
You have two separate minutes. You have the regular meeting minutes and then you have the joint session. And we wanted to remind you guys too of the tire recycling event on Saturday at the fairground.
My wife sort of reminded me like twenty-five times, but thank you.
He must have tires.
Yeah, I have tires, Sam.
I think I actually have a couple. Might as well take them out there and do a demo.
Well.
Is there a limit on the number of tires? The only reason I asked is.
There is now? There was, there was not according to Peggy.
Well, the flyer says ten.
The flyer says ten? I guess I'm, I didn't read.
The flyer I have definitely does not have a limit.
I don't remember seeing one.
I just know she said no businesses.
Yeah, all I read was no businesses is what I read.
So now who else am I gonna get to bring ten tires in your time? Becca's volunteering. I see her handling. There, there was no, there was, 'cause here's the deal. If there is a limit, I'm in trouble because I'll bet I've had ten people call me and ask me, and I said, "They said no limit." So we're going by the initial, what she said, and if they bring them and they got twelve, they better take all twelve, because.
Hang on, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Just a second.
No limit?
So I've got Peggy, and Peggy's saying it's ten. Did you have anything else that you wanted to share, Peggy?
We had to put a limit on it because there were so many people wanting to bring truckloads, truckloads. And we wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to bring something. So we put a limit of ten and will be set up Saturday.
So Peggy, you're, you're creating a, a double-headed monster here because the flyer says no limit. And that flyer got.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't say no limit.
Doesn't say no limit, but there's no.
There's no limit on it.
Correct. So anybody that has come in and on our advertisement on the radio, we did put a limit of ten.
Oh, boy.
Good luck.
So here, so here's what's gonna happen, Peggy, is all those people that called me that I told that there was no limit are gonna show up with a trailer load of tires that they have spent their whole day loading, and then you're only gonna take ten, and they're, they're gonna have to go back home.
Well, they'll wait that time. It's not gonna come back. It'll, it'll come back on us. We just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance to, to bring something in and.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peggy. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm just gonna send them home then. I don't even think I'm gonna waste my time with ten.
He won't do me no good. I was planning on taking like fifty. I'm just cleaning my barn out.
Again, no call.
Go toward the end of the day.
Huh? No, then they'll say that they're almost full and they're only gonna take five. Becca, can you step in here and help with this? Give us, give us some advice on what you would do.
There you go. She can bring ten.
Yeah, you wanna take ten?
Another reminder, the committee meeting October second. I did send it out to the paper and all when we changed that date because it was on October the ninth, and that was called break, so October the second for the next.
Send us a reminder. Because I won't even be thinking about it on the second. I'll be thinking it's the next week.
Oh, yeah, 'cause the ninth was called break, so we moved it up. I think that everywhere around my desk, so I wouldn't forget.
Yeah, because there's things I wanna look at before we use that board.
I'm running down the list of people in my head that called me asking about how many tires they could bring, trying to figure out who they were so I can go and try to call them. Before it hits, 'cause I already know this is gonna be ugly.
Another subject that Boys and Girls Club, I'd like to bring back because they think we say all summer long for free. Before school, after school?
Hopefully they can raise some money.
My grandson loves going there before and after school and like even the summer.
Have you heard anyone getting kicked out of Boys and Girls Club?
One of my girls got kicked out of daycare, but she was like a infant. I went back to work.
Was she a biter?
No, she cried. She, she cried. She required too much attention. She had to call us, and we're like, "We just, we just can't do it." I'm like, "Okay." This was a biter. This was a biter.
That's typically why you get kicked out.
That's a good way to get kicked out.
You gotta biter. Tax sale.
When is the tax sale? Tomorrow.
Surprise! We put a limit of ten property on it this year. Don't put that in the paper, please.
What was the final number? Seeing like four hundred of these second properties?
Four eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
What's that there, Matt? You already signed that?
Yeah, yeah, these are all signed. Those are all signed. My pile of them, except for the largest one.
We're good, man.
Okay, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Say it.
Unanimous. Thank you all for coming.